The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our Town Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, March 4th, 2019, 7:00 PM. I would ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. If Councilwoman Combs will lead us.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have any presentations tonight or any public hearings, so item number three, I request approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of February 19, 2019, regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Item number four, announcements and reports. Does anybody have any announcements or reports to make tonight?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I had the honor of -- oops. Oh, and I said oops again, too. Last Sunday, I did have the honor once again to do the town welcome at the state Special Olympics. The Winter Olympics now include gymnastics competition, and it's held and hosted here in Plainville by the Farmington Valley Gymnastics Center on Northwest Drive. It's a great event, a lot of enthusiasm, and I was very honored to get the welcome from our town.
Wonderful. Thanks for being there on our behalf.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Terrific. Does anybody else have any announcements or reports to make? Okay, I have one announcement. Some of you may have been aware of this. I'm sure there's several that are aware of this, but I would like to congratulate the Plainville High School coed cheer team. They just won first place in their statewide championship, and it is the first time they have won that honor in school history. So I'd like to congratulate them on behalf of the Town Council. That's a wonderful achievement. We're very happy to see our students do these kinds of things, and certainly they excel at a great many things. Maybe at some point, we could have them here for an honor with a proclamation. Hopefully, we can put something together. But at any rate, I do want to congratulate them, and if you'll pass that on to the students and the coaches, the parents, everybody involved. I know this takes a lot of time, energy, and effort, and all of that has certainly shown through in a number of ways at Plainville High School, so congratulations again. If there are no other announcements and reports, we will go on to appointments and resignations. I think we have one appointment tonight.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Julianne Ramia of 135 New Breton Avenue to the Planning and Voting Commission as an alternate member.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Are there any other appointments or resignations this evening? Moving along. Reported the Town Attorney, Attorney Mastriani, do you have anything for us tonight?
I do not have any reports tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right. Reported the Town Manager, Mr. Lee.
I have a couple of brief items. First one is the 150th Anniversary Committee Recommendations. The committee had their initial meeting on February 21st. They have developed several ideas for celebrating Plainville's 150th anniversary, and Scott Colby will report on some of the thoughts of the group.
So the group met, as Robert said, on February 21st for the first time. The committee consists of members from town staff, boards and commissions, local agencies, and town residents. The committee chair is Benjamin Getteman, representing the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, while the vice chair is Foster White, representing the Board of Education and Wheeler YMCA. After a very productive first meeting, the committee would like to make the following recommendations. The Historic Center members are putting together a stamp book listing in which participants can visit some of the top historic sites in Plainville, where they would learn some history about the locations. Participants would be able to pick up a stamp book from a variety of locations still to be determined. This is something that could be completed throughout the summer into the fall with the intent to have a prize given to those that turn in at Pumpkinfest. On Saturday, July 20th, the committee would like to have a bus available to shuttle participants who are unable to walk to these historic sites for the stamp book. On this day, individuals who participate would meet with volunteers at each of the sites, be able to ask any questions, and provide information on each of those site locations. On Sunday, July 21st, the 150th Anniversary Committee would like to set up an event at Norton Park from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. It would consist of a family picnic in which attendees can bring their own food. They would also like to get some food trucks, if possible, to participate with different food options. As for entertainment, they would like to have a performance from the Plainville Wind Ensemble and the Nzinga Daughters, if the groups wish to participate. They would also like to contact the youth counselors from Wheeler YMCA to have them coordinate games to be played that were played in 1869 when the town was founded. The committee would like to start advertising on Facebook and getting the message out regarding the dates of the events as well as soon as possible, and would like to promote other town events leading up to July 21st. As the committee is in the early stages of planning, more updates will be provided in the upcoming weeks and possible requests for some funding.
That sounds very interesting, and it's a nice thing to do for our town. I'm happy that the committee was able to get together so quickly and put some of those thoughts down. I think it's very doable. I hope there's great weather, of course, a good turnout. Is there a thought to a rain date? I don't know if the committee considered that, but...
As of right now, they haven't considered the rain date.
Okay.
They're going to be meeting regularly up until those dates in the summer to finalize plans and come up with some of the more finer details.
Okay. Do you need any kind of approval from us, Robert, or any sort of acknowledgement, or go ahead?
No, not at this time. We'll just provide you with regular updates, and at some point in time, if you think, you know, for some reason that, you know, you want to give some ideas, we certainly can convey that to them, and, you know, if you have any concerns about any issues that are brought, we can do the same, and that can be done, you know, offline as well. It doesn't need to be done necessarily.
Okay. I'm happy they got -- they did accomplish quite a bit in one meeting, didn't they?
They did.
Unlike government. They're very efficient. All right. Thank you, Scott.
Okay. Next item I have is the 2019 Small Cities Grant Application. The town plans to submit a 2019 Small Cities Grant Application under the category of public housing modernization. The project would be for much-needed ADA improvements to 80 units at the Housing Authority, 50 of which would be at Woodmore Village and 30 units at Centerview Manor. As part of the application process, a public hearing was held on February 21st in the municipal center. Housing Authority members attended the public hearing to express their support for the project. The project would replace the existing bathtubs in all 80 units with walk-in showers to meet the needs of the Housing Authority's aging in-place residents. In addition, Woodmore Village would have five kitchen upgrades, making these units fully ADA compliant. The maximum grant amount that can be requested for public housing modernization is $1.5 million. The town would be requesting the maximum amount. In addition, as part of the Small Cities Grant Application requirements, the town reaffirm our commitment to fair housing, and there are several items under new business that would allow for the application to be submitted to the State Housing Department. So, you know, those are what, you know, those items deal with is the Small Cities Grant Application in addition to the resolution. The next item I have is happenings, and I'll turn it over to Scott to report on them as well.
I do not have a happenings report this evening.
There you go.
Nothing's happening.
There you go. I'm short this week.
It's okay. You're all deserving of a break.
Well, we did spend a lot of time putting together the presentation with regards to our budget this evening.
I'm sure. Well, thank you for all your efforts, and we appreciate what you do for us, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay. That completes the Town Manager's report. We're moving on to the public comment. Thank you. Moving on to the public comment section of our meeting. During this time, we welcome the public to come to that microphone. This one's going to be set up for our presentation. If you wish to speak to the council, please come to the microphone, state your name and address. You will be given three minutes to speak to the council. Does anybody wish to speak to the council?
Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening.
A couple numbers.
I'm here tonight.
Name and address, please.
Okay, Gary Guruski, 28th View Street, Plainville, Connecticut. After my last meeting here, my concerns about the water problems up by the Tulkon blasting sites. I've -- would like you to look at some information, and I would like you to consider getting this on the Town Council agenda to hear from other people besides myself on what is going on up there. The first report I want to present, you guys, and you can keep, is of well sampling over 30 years ago that found high levels of sulfur. Now, sulfur is a main component in blasting material. This house is literally 250 yards from the Tulkon quarry. I have seven reports. I'm going to only give you this one for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
To keep, and I want you to realize that there are, has been, and is contaminants in our wells. I also, I want to make this comfortable for you. I know I only got three minutes, but I have a letter here that's signed by Mr. Lee on how he went to a meeting about the phosphates in our water. Not our water, the whole town's water. These phosphates, phosphate levels are extremely high, and all you got to do is look on the Internet, and you'll see, I could present this to the council, too. The phosphates are caused from excess groundwater and minerals exposed through mining process. Since I called and asked to see if I could get on a Town Council, what I would need to do to get on the agenda, I didn't get an answer. I did get a visit from the town engineer, and I'll quote just one of his lines. In his observation, he could not verify or refute that the blasting has redirected the groundwater. If you'd like a copy of this, I'd rather give you a copy of this. He doesn't seem to put in his report that while he was there for 10 minutes, four neighbors going up the street stopped and talked about the damage that has been done. Now, this is, I know I only got very short time, but I'm going to leave this with you. This is what happens up there. The groundwater comes out of nine-degree morning, flows freely on the top of the ground, goes into these drainage stitches, which you can tell are clogged and wet. The water then runs over the road and freezes. This is nine-degree morning.
Okay.
I'm going to leave this with you.
Thank you. I'm going to have copies made for distribution to all of the council members. I'm sure the Town Manager will...
There's just one more thing.
...give you some of our information.
Very quickly, I would just like you to try to think about this, give me a couple of weeks, and maybe get it on the Town Agenda, Town Council Agenda, to be a speaking point of possibly getting some kind of study done up there, because they're going to be leaving soon, and their contract clearly states that they're supposed to be taking care of any environmental issues.
Thank you.
I thank you for all of your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council?
Sir, you dropped an envelope.
Anybody else?
I think somebody else.
Mr. Screen?
Evening, Arthur Screen, 5 Cornell Street. Ladies and gentlemen, I became aware of something that I wish I knew sooner that you were working on, but someone asked me to review one of your previous meetings on Nutmeg and found that you're proposing a fiber optic project for the sewer plant under the phosphorus removal project, and I believe it's on tonight's agenda for you to vote on. I consider this a perpetration of a fraud on the public. The funding for the phosphorus project was presented to the public in a referendum as a mandate for phosphorus removal. The pump stations that you're planning to run fiber to have absolutely nothing to do with treating the water. All it does, the sewerage, all a pump station does is move it from one place to the other when it can't move by gravity to the plant. You specifically told the public you wanted funding for a state-mandated project to remove phosphorus, nothing about running fiber optic cable to a pump station. The use of that money is inappropriate for this project. Also, I would question whether or not it's even legal under the fact that you got a clean water fund grant for the phosphorus removal project from the DEP. Are they aware that you're looking to divert over $250,000, a quarter of a million dollars worth of money they loaned you to do a phosphorus removal project? Second, I understand that the objective of this project is so that the pump station signals when something goes wrong can be phoned to a cellphone held by the superintendent of the plant or an on-call person. As the former chairman of the Building Committee for the earlier project at the plant some 10 years ago, I can tell you that at least four pump stations right now are already outfitted with that technology under the previous projects, which were legal because they were for pump station improvements. And my information, and I haven't confirmed this with current plant staff, but at the time, staff was going to outfit, we did four, and staff was going to do four others under their budget. My information is that that was done by staff after the four pump stations that we did. There's no reason to spend over $700,000 for fiber optic running, and I understand you've been convinced that it's more reliable than phone lines. It's not true. Somebody said it's less susceptible to a power outage. Fiber optic works on pulsations of light. How do you create the light? Electricity. The electricity goes out, you're not going to get the signal to put across the fiber optic. Plus, not all fiber optic installations...
The new sum up part expired.
I hope you don't want to hear.
Not all fiber optics is underground, so those fiber optic lines that aren't underground are still subject to weather conditions. And one other thing I saw that I'm going to caution you against is future transferring to voice-over-internet phone systems. Last night during the storm...
I need you to wrap up.
I'm wrapping up. Last night, under the storm, my internet connection went down for more than a half an hour, including my phone, because I have VoIP. So it's not as reliable, especially if you're going to put the fire department and the police department on VoIP. You're going to have problems, and you're going to put the public at risk. Do not pass this. You'll be complicit in perpetrating a fraud on the public.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Anybody else? Put vote. Mr. Edman?
Edman, Joel Edman, 63 Hollyberry Lane. No rail, no trail, and no thank you. Nonsense. Nonsense. It's a great word to describe a lot of what's happening in our world, nation, state, and even our wonderful little town of Plainville. Anybody getting fed up yet? They can't take it anymore? Wars, climate change, walls, tolls, taxes, traffic congestion, crumbling infrastructure of roads, bridges, and trails. Tunnels now are the new fix, and the list goes on and on. I always wanted to process all of this and then navigate through all of this going forward. I have been fortunate to live, to be almost 75 years old now. I've had a lot of close calls and still happy to just be alive. Change. I witnessed and observed a lot of that, especially right here in Plainville. I was 12 years old when it became time to get the cows into the barn for their last milking due to the economical and feasibility to run a small dairy operation. We admins lived within our means. It seems nowadays, if you don't get an annual 3% raise, you are headed for bankruptcy. All well and good, no need to cut the cable and turn down the heat, shut off the lights, and hopefully the paycheck will cover everything until the next one comes. A lot of us taxpayers are trying to get by on social security, maybe a small retirement check, and dwindling savings. We are expected to pay for government services in our youth application, of which they continue to escalate every year with benefits that have become unaffordable for many of us who don't receive COLAs. What's up with that? The trail gap and now the connector to Connecticut Fast Track is a want, not a need, and I am adamantly opposed to its design and construction with our town budget annually increasing $1 million and more. Usually, it's way past time to tighten up on the wasteful spending. The powers that be expect all this extra tax money, and in return, only allows us three minutes, twice the amount, to express ourselves up here at the podium. What a bunch of horsemen are.
Can you wrap up, Mr. Edman?
Yeah, I have one paragraph left, and Joanne knows all about that. She was an equestrian years ago in the day to New England Championships and five Connecticut Championships, but that's besides the point.
Thank you for that information.
The power...
Could you sum up, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
With a new recession soon to come, it's time to show some respect for the more negatively impacted homeowners and traffic. Shelf-to-trail idea and design that only benefits a relatively few. This gap flap is a needless, senseless, expensive boondoggle of a project much like the proverbial saying, selling us a bill of goods. It's not good. No rail, no trail, and no thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council tonight that has not done so? Anybody else? Almost done here. Okay.
What?
Joanne?
Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. Well, this is another chance to say, I strongly oppose alignment C of the trail and any other alignment which would negatively impact Pearon Road, Pierce Street, Broad Street, Hemingway Street, into the park, through the park, to connect with Southington. It just is not a good idea. And I thought tonight we were supposed to talk about the municipal budget.
We're going to be doing that after we finish all of the business of the regular meeting, and that will be after we finish that.
Well, I was going to comment that, first of all...
Okay, well, we're going to do it after you finish the business, and there's a public...
Okay, and then the public...
I'm just letting you know, Thursday, we're having a public hearing, so that could happen at that point.
All right. Let me make a little public announcement about animals in this town. I hope the people are taking good care of their animals. It's extremely cold out there. I'm just hoping and praying that they are being well taken care of. I don't want to, I don't want to know, but I do want to know if, in fact, people are leaving their dogs out or... I have a big old black cat that doesn't have a home. I don't know where he comes from, but I wish he'd come more often so I could feed him. But there's, it's just so many out there that are not being taken care of. I want people to know that there are people watching. Desmond's army is out there watching. They're out there trying to make the law stiffer. There's a certain person in this town that got away with murder, and it's not fair to the animals. And it just, it goes on and on. I don't know. I'm going to wind it up. I'm just so tired. I'm just...
Okay.
Going to wind it up.
Yep, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so this evening?
I doubt. Gil Black, 4 CNC Avenue. I wasn't going to say anything, but since Joanne brought this up, there is a, some Florida senators, I think they're senators that can't recall, if they're representatives, I'm not sure. Anyhow, they've got a bill going, which she might be interested in, and it's about animal cruelty and making it, making somebody who's accused of cruelty to animals a felon, which would be really wonderful, because, you know, they always say that a person who hurts an animal is going to go on and hurt a child or human, and it's a really disgusting thing. And this way, also, they were trying to do something in the Connecticut legislature, and I called them, and they weren't aware of this, so. And I actually got a letter back from Chris Murphy about it, so he's working on some other laws also. But it would be really good, because they were wondering in Connecticut how they'd have registry, but if a person's a felon, all you have to do is call the police and find out. But they are, so it would take care of things really quickly. So just to let people know, they should call their reps and tell them to speak up for this stuff, because they will, they will respond. Not blooming tall, but I try. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Anybody else? No? Okay, thank you. This will conclude the public comment section of our meeting. We don't have any old business listed on our agenda, but we do have some items under our new business for recommended motions, so let's move on to item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Make a motion for the Town Council acting as the Water Pollution Control Authority to adopt a resolution entitled Resolution of Plainville Water Pollution Control Authority: Pump Station Monitoring System Upgrades.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do. I know we have the chief, and Joe is here. Just a couple of questions with regards to what Mr. Screen said. I don't know if you want to come up, or who is going to answer these, but, you know, the question about can we do work on the pump stations? You know, if the electricity goes out, that, you know, these fiber optic lines become obsolete, you know, either one, want to answer it, so, you know, Town Manager, I don't know who wants to take this one.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. I can address some of what was discussed. You know, this project is really about saving money in communications, and much like a marriage, you have to be able to communicate both ways. We're not able to do that right now. Let's say we have this marriage where our pump station can call us and tell us if there's a problem, and unless we dispatch staff out, which costs us money, there's no way of us knowing exactly what the problem is. There's no way of us remedying the problem without actually going out there. And in times when there's a storm and there are problems at multiple pump stations... And in times when there's a storm and there are problems at multiple pump stations, and they're both, they're calling us simultaneously, again, I have limited resources. I would have to send people to each pump station to determine what the problem is and then decide where to send those resources to resolve the problem. With the ability to have back-and-forth communications, I can look at what problems are coming in. I can determine which ones are more serious and which ones I can resolve by talking to the pump station, by telling it what to do, and that will save the town both my department's time and money.
And I don't know who, you know, if the electricity goes out, to what Mr. Screen said, is that true? Is it, I mean, that was the -- I don't know.
No, no, I mean, we have generators that could pull, generate power that will run the system.
Okay. And just about, you know, again, I don't mean, but, you know, if we vote to approve this, I mean, can we talk about, you know, fraud on the public? I, you know, to me, it seems very logical that if the pump stations can't pump, we can't remove the phosphorus, so to me, it doesn't make sense why, you know, and I respect Mr. Screen, what you're saying, but, I mean, I don't feel like I'm committing fraud by saving the town $40,000 a year. Can we talk a little bit about?
Well, we did consult with the bond council, who read the bond ordinance, and he's the one who drafted the resolution and said if the resolution is passed, then that would be in compliance with the ordinance.
Okay. So working on the pump stations, we are allowed based on the way we, based on the resolution and?
Yes, based on the review of the town, the bond council.
Okay.
And if I may add one thing, and just in response to what was said, we did speak to DEEP about this project. They are aware of it. They're not opposed to it. They understand what it is we're trying to do, and they don't have a problem with us funding this project this way.
And can I just ask the chief a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a, of course, I just wanted to make a comment that the, as I recall, the referendum was to make improvements for phosphorus removal, but there are other things that are happening at the pump station to make upgrades, to make it more efficient, and to do other things, correct, as this project goes along?
Treatment plant.
I don't mean to keep making you jump back and forth here, Joe, but it was my understanding that, of course, the phosphorus removal was mandated by other agencies, both federal and state, and we're certainly going to be doing that, but there's other improvements that are going to be made there as well. Is that right?
Yes, absolutely. We are in doing sludge improvements. Out of the project, approximately $2 million of the project is going towards sludge improvement, which is going to be new equipment for de-watering the sludge and pumping the sludge and moving it around. We're also doing some other upgrades with our SCADA system so that we'll have better communications, and there'll be some computer upgrades also as well as part of the project that aren't directly phosphorus removal, but obviously, they all have to come together. It's a treatment plant, so you kind of need the whole plant to work right to do any one thing, and that includes phosphorus.
Okay, thank you for that. Chief?
Yeah, just a quick question about the safety with this, if we do go ahead and approve this tonight, from your perspective or a police perspective?
All right, thank you, good evening. Just a couple of real big, broad-stroke points for me. Number one, the police industry is not driving the fiber optic industry. We're just a part of the equipment vendors and every other technology aspect that impacts the police performance, driving their product on fiber optic. So it is inevitable that we will eventually lose the copper connections. I verified that through the phone companies that are handling the copper connections, and this isn't me just conjuring this up. Eventually, T1 lines, what they're known as T1 lines, which is the final copper connection now made with copper, will be gone. I don't, I can't tell you when that's going to happen, but I'm told that is inevitable. The other piece for me is reliability piece. So through the police leader's perspective, those fiber optics on lines, whether they're underground or hanging on lines, whether they're submerged in water, they'll still operate. Unless the fiber optic is broken, they will still operate. So that's a big boost for me because if a phone line comes down, if lightning strikes a pole or whatever, what I'm told through police leaders as well as IT leaders is that the fiber optic continues to function. Another big plus for us for public safety. And the third piece of it for me is the future. I can't predict what the future is going to be, but I do know we're driving towards using fiber optic for everything we're doing, whether it's cameras in the park, or it's police radio, or it's voice-over-IP phones. If I were to stand my feet and say, please don't give me a voice-over-IP phone, I'm still getting a voice-over-IP phone. So this is the future. I'm not going to be able to turn back on it, and from what I have found in my time with cameras and with radio systems, fiber optic is the future. So that's where I'm at with it, council.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the chief or for Joe while he's here, or any other comments on the motion that we're about to vote on?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I am going to support this motion. I think that technologically, it's been a while that we've known that fiber optic is the way to go, certainly in terms of speed, reliability, safety, especially when you think of the police department. And we did know, you know, when we started to resume discussion of the fiber optic project, we were assured that all appropriate parties had been contacted in terms of allowability of doing it at this point. I am satisfied with those answers. I think it's a very important project that we need to get going on, and I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make a comment? Okay. There are no other comments. I will ask for a vote. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number two.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled Resolution Regarding Connecticut Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled Fair Housing Resolution Town of Plainville.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number four.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to reappoint Town Manager Robert E. Lee as the Fair Housing Officer and authorize him to sign and implement the Fair Housing Statement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number five.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to authorize Town Manager to sign and implement the Title IV equal, no, I'm sorry, Title VI equal opportunity statement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number six.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to establish the following special meetings with the Town Council under the purpose of considering and acting upon the fiscal year 2020 budget, March 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th, 19th, 20th, 21th, oh, 21, 2019, in the Municipal Center Council Chambers at 6:30 p.m.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is everybody okay with these dates and at that time? We can change.
Yeah, I, the high school parent-teacher conferences are the 20th.
Oh, well, we may be done by then.
Well, I know it's six meetings out into this, but that would be my only issue with the dates.
Otherwise, everything is okay?
Yes.
Great, okay?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number seven.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you for all of that. Item number 12, under Other Discussions of Interest, we are now going to get the first look at the Town Manager's proposed FY 2020 budget. He has a presentation for us, and I guess, Robert, you can take it away.
Thank you very much. I have also some thanks I'd like to make before we get started, first to Dr. Brummett for all of her coordination with the town to put this presentation together this evening, Rob Dunne, who's the Finance Director as well, Scott Colby, who, as the Assistant to the Town Manager, has put a lot of the packages together that are in front of you in gathering of all the information, Sam Adlerstein as well, Director of Finance and Operations for the school, Shirley Osley as the Assistant Town Manager, and Lisa Mateo as the Executive Assistant. It's certainly a team effort to put all of this information together for you this evening. We have 50 slides for you this evening. We'll go through them relatively quickly, I believe. I will say that 28 of the slides, or 56% are BOE slides, and 22 or 42, 22 slides of 44% are town slides.
It's about how the budget looks.
Yes, you might enjoy that. We'll start with a summary. We'll go through the general government expenses and revenues, then we'll turn it over to Dr. Brummett for the Board of Education presentation. We'll go through debt service, capital improvement program, the estimates of what the mill rate could be based upon where we stand today, mill rate impact, how it may impact the homeowners and condominium owners, and then finish up with some statistics with regards to Plainville's economy, current economy, and providing with some statistics as well. So it sounds like a lot, and it is, but, you know, it'll go, you know, it's a summary of where we stand today. Proposed budget, total 62 point, well, $62,238,104. It's an increase of $2,182,000 or $46, excuse me, $2,182,046 or 3.63%. We break the budget up into four major categories, and those four major categories are the Board of Education budget, the Town Budget, General Government budget, debt service, and capital. These, this is a victorial representation of that. Board of Education makes up approximately 62% of the budget. Town is somewhere around 29%. Capital, 7.6%, and debt, excuse me, debt service, 7.6% and capital, 1.53%. From a dollar point of view, the Board of Education operating budget is proposed to increase by 3.29%. Several weeks ago, the Board of Education recommended a budget of 3%. Since that time, the governor has proposed a budget that would have communities participate or contribute to the teachers' retirement fund, and as I understand, the legislation, those monies are supposed to be provided by the, through the Board of Education budget, so we added that into their budget. If not for the teachers' retirement amount of $107,000, which is proposed by Governor Lamott, the Board of Education budget would be an even 3%. General Government budget is proposed to increase by 2.69%. Debt service by 7.6%, and the capital projects by 18.7%. And that capital projects is really the contribution from the general fund to capital projects, and we'll explain that a little further on as we go through the presentation. Our expenditure increases in blue is the last eight years with, you know, those are the actual expenditure increases to the total town budget over the last eight years. The yellow is a representation of the proposed budget of 3.63%. I would point out that the average increase over the last, and I'm going to say nine years, which would even include the yellow, the average increase over that span of time would be 1.86%. So it's a nine-year average increase of 1.86%, even if the yellow was included in that, in that, you know, to the budget as well. As far as projected revenues, and these are based on the governors, the intergovernmental budgets is based on the governor's proposed budget, it would increase revenues to the Town of Plainville by approximately $168,000. We did have a grand list increase, I think it was about a half a percent, which would generate about $261,000 in new revenue based upon the current mill rate. You see some small increases in license and permits that we're projecting, use of money, fines and fees, and other types of revenues. The general government changes, we have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven major categories in general government under, well, in the general government budget, we have administration, which we call general government as well, is actually going down by 3%. Public safety up by a little bit over $300,000, or 6.5%. Public works, about 1%, $39,000. Health and Human Services, $71,000. Civic and Cultural, 4.7%, it looks like a lot, but 7, you know, 4.7%, but it's $7,300. It's a small base to begin with. Employees and fringe benefits, 3.4%, and sundry and other transfers in and out and whatnot, no change. That's where we get the total 2.69% increase. To try to summarize the increases, and you will see that the public safety at $306,000 and employee benefits make up most of the increases. We take the rest of the budget, pluses and the minuses, that makes up about $45,000 of the total, $470,000 expenses being proposed, so it's pretty clear that where those major What happened there, Scott?
I couldn't tell you.
Don't want it happening again. Major drivers of our budget, payroll, projected $241,000 increase. Most of that is, you know, has to do with existing personnel, great majority of it. Average salary increase we're projecting right now is 2%. Also recommending that the police overtime budget be increased by $100,000, by $450,000 to $550,000. To put that in a little bit of perspective, back in fiscal year 14, or actually, it was fiscal year 15, Town Council increased the overtime budget from $360,000 to $450,000. This was five years ago. So for '15, '16, '17, '18, and '19, the five-year average of actual expenditures at the end of the year ended up being over $600,000. We, you know, it's my recommendation that it's, you know, that it's clear, and in every single one of those years, we did go over the $450,000 budget. First year, we were close to it, but since then. And that has to do with a variety of factors that we've talked about time and time again, you know, at the council level, and, you know, rather than do an additional appropriation at the end of the year, I think it's in the town's best interest to budget at least a good portion of that difference and address it as part of this budget. I would also like to point out, and that's the note at the bottom, if not for the increases in the police overtime, which is $150,000, if not for the increases related to police overtime, which is $100,000, if not for the, as it relates to recycling, let me just do a little bit of an explanation with regards to recycling. Town of Plainville is with 13 other towns in a contract for where we take our recycling. We take it to Berlin. This contract goes through the end of this June. The current contract pays the towns about $9 a ton every time we bring a ton of recycling over to Berlin. Contract runs out in June. As you may be aware, the recycling world has turned upside down with amoeba that is China, where most of our recycling went in the past, has closed the doors on taking recycling, and there is not a market for taking a lot of the recycling as it stands right now. Towns that are, that were not as fortunate as the Town of Plainville in having a contract, a long-term contract that went through the end of this year, currently, they're signing contracts where they have to pay Berlin or other recycling facilities to take their recycling, and they're paying, some of them are paying $65 to $70 a ton to deliver recycling there. So no longer are they getting a revenue, they're actually paying, and that tip fee is roughly equivalent And that, that TIPV is roughly equivalent to what we're paying to get rid of our trash. We, you know, we're speaking to the people at DEEP with regards to that and, you know, whether we should, you know, consider maybe changing some recycling, even if it's on a short-term basis. But as it stands right now, I can't go forward with a budget and be honest about the fact that, you know, we, we should expect that we're going to be paying somewhere, that we're going to be paying a TIPV instead of receiving a revenue. We're estimating that the impact of this particular budget would be about $64,000. So, if not for that number as well. And then there's another issue with regards to pension. This is what a defined benefit plan deals with primarily the Police Department. Our normal, the pension increase in the budget is $81,000, but of that $81,000, $40,000 of it is because our actuaries have informed us that because the mortality rates have changed over time, meaning people are living longer, they, we have to account for that. We have to account for that. So, in addition to putting in our regular, you know, amount based upon how much return we had in the last year and, and some of the changes in personnel, that we have to, you know, increase it more because of the extended mortality rates that are out there. That's roughly equivalent to $40,000. If it wasn't for those three items, the police overtime, paying for recycling, and the fact that we have to now account for mortality rates, the increase to the general government budget would be 266,000 or 1.5% just to kind of put that in perspective. So, those are really the, the items that are, that are driving this budget forward. And I guess the, you know, the decision has to be made is how are we going to, how are we going to deal with that? Because those, those three items really aren't going away. So, that's all I have for this portion of our presentation. I'd like to ask Dr. Brummett to come up and do her 28 slides. 56%.
I promise to do my 56% very quickly. Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much, Chairman Lucy, for acknowledging our co-ed cheer team. They did a great job last night. I happened to be there and it was amazing. I've got a video if anyone's interested. I also would like to thank my business manager, Sam Adlerstein, Steve LaPage, Assistant Superintendent, and our Board of Education for all their assistance and our administrative team for getting the budget to where it is right now. It was a lot of hard work. It started back in October and here we are in March and we're still at it. All of the pieces and components that I discussed as part of our budget go directly back to our vision and what we see as important for our school district to meet the goals surrounding students' teaching and learning. And it's important for our Town Council to know that in spite of our budget costs, we are still one of the lower per pupil expenditures in the state of Connecticut. We rank 129 out of 165, 168, rather. So, we're quite low, but we get a lot of great results for that amount. Similar to what Robert Lee already explained, our budget history over the past eight years has been very low, averaging about 1.07%. That does take into account two cuts that happened mid-year to our ECS funding that were absorbed at the board level. In '16, '17, the budget was reduced by $100,000 midstream and last year, $300,000 as a direct result of state funding cuts. We did work collaboratively with the town, though, to minimize the impact to both the town and the board. In the 2018-19 adjustments for health insurance, because of a huge increase last year, we changed vendors, but that part of our big increase last year was a direct result of substantial increases to health insurance. Anyway, with regard to all of the ECS ins and outs, the average increase has been about Where are we at right now with our budget? Currently, we're in a freeze. In light of a very tight budget year, we implemented a freeze right around the holiday time. We believe that this was necessary to make sure we ended the year on a positive or equal note. We don't, we don't forecast any ECS cuts this year. In fact, I'm pretty sure we would have heard about it by now, but the impact of two previous years with cuts has been tough. But we are on track right now, especially with regard to having a freeze in place to end the year, you know, with being in the black, so to speak. Good news, since the governor's budget came out, there's been pluses and minuses. One of the pluses is that Plainville's ECS money is indeed going up for the upcoming fiscal year. The number that we were given is $294,000 in the plus. Obviously, as Mr. Lee explained moments ago, that is offset by the unexpected inclusion of teachers' retirement at about $100,000. So, that was not something that was anticipated when the board developed their budget. Therefore, as Mr. Lee indicated tonight, that's got to be tacked on after we'd already passed our budget. But currently, we're one of the few towns in the state of Connecticut that is going to see an ECS increase for this year. It's also anticipated to continue going up in subsequent years. So, that at least is some positive news amidst some challenges. Our enrollment forecast is pretty stable. If you look at what previous enrollment forecasts indicated, and the red was what was projected and then the dark blue is what actually happened. And we believe that in subsequent years, will continue to be a little bit higher than projected, but all things being equal, our enrollment is relatively steady. This is a pretty busy chart, but it's our way of looking at class sizes and determining whether we can reduce teachers or add teachers or move them around. What we determined after going through this process is that while we have to move teachers around at the elementary level, we really can't reduce any. And this kind of gives you a sense of our class sizes at the lower grades are a bit lower and at the upper grades are a bit higher. This year, we expect to graduate about 172 kids in our high school and our middle school enrollment's hovering about 525. Our high school enrollment's about 698. Again, we expect that to be very stable for the coming years. Here's some of our drivers for our budget increases. Teacher salaries, they get cost of length increase each year, and then they also have a step system, which on certain years, more teachers move to different steps or they get an advanced degree, so they get a pay raise that way. So, that does constitute quite a bit of our budget increase. And then these are some of the other increases from our, some of other bargaining units. The shaded areas in yellow represent bargaining units that are under negotiations as we speak, so we don't know what that end result will be. We're estimating a 2% increase, but prior to negotiations, it's impossible to be definitive about that. And you'll notice a very big increase in our substitute cost. We've had just an unfortunate pattern of folks with some significant illnesses or folks having babies has necessitated quite a few substitutes. We monitor that very closely. So, as was mentioned previously, prior to the TRB impact or the Teachers Retirement impact, we have requested and had board approval for a 3% budget increase, but I want to unpack that a little bit. Although we have a 3% increase, when you pull it apart, the health insurance impact is still pretty significant. We, we got a, we were hoping for a much lower increase this year, but it is an 8% increase over last year. And the Wheeler Project, which is currently going on and is going very, very well, has necessitated us bringing preschoolers over to Linden for the, for this year and next year, and the busing cost for that is $52,000. We tried to get it to be part of the project cost, but that was not allowed. We have, since the budget was initially proposed, worked with our architects to bring the kids back to Wheeler middle of next year. So, that initial, initially, this was about $70,000. We got it down to about $52,000 in transportation costs. So, the, what the board calls prior to insurance and the Wheeler impact is really a 2.09% increase. So, those are all the impacts. And as stated earlier, it's going to be up to 3.29 now with the TRB impact. Here are some of the budget drivers kind of broken down a little bit. When you look at the, the full amount in the budget, again, salaries and benefits are huge drivers. We've been able to reduce a little bit out of our professional services and repairs. Our transportation costs went up fairly minimally, thanks to some hard work on our business manager's part. We've tried to reduce or keep fairly flat the utilities and the equipment we've reduced and dues and fees are pretty flat, but all of this added together is a 3% increase, which of course, again, salaries and benefits are the biggest drivers. And this breaking down, again, the, the impact of health insurance, it's almost a full percentage point of our budget, and the Wheeler Project busing, which again is a one-year expense. So, that goes away hopefully by the middle of next year. And again, we're restating that our budget would really be at 2.09% were it not for heavy insurance increases and the Wheeler impact. Staffing changes, each year, we try to look at our current staffing and if we do want to add a teacher, we try to reallocate versus an increase in our staffing. So, this year, we are reducing an art teacher at the high school. Someone's retiring. We are not going to replace them. In exchange, though, we do need to add a social studies teacher. The NEASC accreditation process is underway and they noted during one of their visits that our class sizes in social studies are unacceptably high, so they did recommend that we balance that out. We did eliminate a teacher a few years ago, but found that our class sizes have gotten much too high and we can't offer as many elective courses. We'd like to reduce two special education tutors at the high school, but add a teacher. That's actually a slightly more cost-effective way of doing it. We've got a large cohort of eighth grade students coming up who are requiring special education, so we need a slightly better skill set from a teacher to get that, for those students to be well-educated. We also intend to reduce a behavior tutor at Linden, but add a literacy tutor at Wheeler. So, there's really a balancing here of what we're reducing and what we're adding, and in some cases, slightly more cost-effective. The capital plan has been under some modifications since we first started out. Historically, last year was quite a low capital budget. We had zero under facilities last year and $224,000 under technology. So, this year, we were trying to play a little bit of catch-up with our proposal to look at many different things. We started off, though, at $808,000. I reduced that prior to even sending it to the board by 506, to 566,000. And then the board approved it at that level. And then earlier this month, the town manager asked that we reduce it a bit further, so it's now down to $412,000. I'll explain what that looks like on this slide. So, what we've tried to keep in the capital plan after all those reductions during two different processes is some cleaning equipment. We did not include cleaning equipment last year because of such a tight budget year and we really need to include it for this year. That's $15,000. We are doing a lot of security enhancements due to obviously what's happening in society. So, we are looking at $25,000 for some additional cameras. That actually has also been requested through some grant funds, but unfortunately, we don't know if we're going to get that grant until probably the end of this month. So, we had to put it in our capital plan because it's necessary. We eliminated, what was initially on there is repainting a section of our high school. It's got repainting, rather, it's deteriorated a bit since the renovations. We did take that out per some cuts from the town manager. We looked at head ends, let me see what that says, update head and AC. We do need to put that in so that we have proper cooling of our security, or, excuse me, our online resources. We still want to include PHS automated field lighting. We have a lot of sporting events that happen at the high school. A lot of outside folks use our facilities and they often forget to turn the lights off and then that runs up our rates. So, if we can automate that, it'll save the town money in the long run and also allow, you know, much more ease of use. We had hoped to design and implement a secure entrance to the high school. Our high school's one of the few schools that doesn't have a foyer where you come into and before you head right into the school. It's more recommended that you go through the office first. However, with the cuts that we needed to make, we still want to design that door and then hopefully in subsequent capital budgets, get the door actually designed and implemented. So, that's also been requested through a grant. Topolone landscaping was eliminated from the budget. The Topolone School does need some new chillers on the, on the roof. They've become inoperable. They weren't, we think they weren't installed properly, but that being said, we need to put that in there before the AC fails. The PHS displays, that's, those are monitors much like this. We only did half last year as a cost saving, so we need to do part two of that this coming year, and that's $87,500. Our Chromebook initiative, continuing to replace Chromebooks as they age, they typically last about three to four years. This year, we're recommending grade six, nine, and 10, and that's $135,000. They need cases, especially at the middle level, because the kids are not always as careful with them as they should be. And we also need to replace desktops at Linden and the middle school for our secretaries. Makerspace is one of those innovations that we've been trying to work on. We are eliminating, it's important for everyone to know, that we no longer are replacing computer labs in all the schools because they really are obsolete, except for at the high school. They're now being replaced with the individual Chromebooks or classroom sets. But, and we do need to continue our Makerspace initiative where kids are able to innovate and look at engineering and mathematic careers. So, we're looking to use some of those resources to fund that initiative. We also need some new laptops for our technicians. A few were already purchased, but there are still a few more that need to be purchased, so that's $6,000. We also are recommending security camera, a security camera server at the high school that's also included in the grant and iPads for our kindergarten students as part of our tech replacement cycle. So, all of those ins and outs equal $412,000. There is a chance that about $50,000 of that will be offset by the grant. Again, we don't know where we're going to get the grant or if we'll get it. It also does bear mentioning that the middle school of Plainville is certainly an aging building. It experiences leaks pretty much during any heavy rainstorm. We've been trying to patch it together to keep it going until it would be eligible for a renovation, but I wanted to make the town aware of all of the areas of that school that are pretty, in pretty bad shape. We're hoping that we can hold off on any substantial expenses until it be eligible for the renovation in 2022, but I, it's important to see that the bottom line on all of those areas that are, you know, barely hanging on is about $5 million. So, and that includes the roof and the cooling tower, some of the parking lot has a lot of craters, et cetera. So, again, we're trying to put all that off until it's eligible for renovation because then we get some state reimbursement. So, in spite of a very lean budget, we are hoping to have some of these program enhancements or continuations. Like to continue our full-day, full-week preschool. It, we do intend to increase parent fees. The additional social studies teacher at Plainville High, special ed teacher at Plainville High, the indoor track team. We were able to start it this year because we weren't running some other teams or clubs, but in order to have that continue, it does need to be added to the budget. We would like the additional literacy tutor at Wheeler, the expansion of school business partnerships, that's at no cost, and we're often getting a lot of support from our business partnerships. And we're going to modify PHS's schedule to allow for increased student supports, which was another thing that NEASC recommended to us. I also would be remiss if I didn't mention some of the very exciting and efficient things that we're doing as a result of our shared services model, which by the way, has gotten some state bangouts in some recent reports as Plainville is one of the few communities that does have a shared service model. So, I think it's important to stress what that does for us. The finance departments have done a lot of work together, most recently leveraging some pension plans that will help hopefully save our constituents some fees. Our SRO model at the high school has been nothing short of outstanding with student relationships, part of our instructional program, in-school investigations, and just overall sense of security and safety as a result of her presence. We've done a lot of technology infrastructure on both sides of the town and the board with phone systems, copier leases and other things that have helped save some money. And we've recently merged both HR and payroll within this model. Again, very successful. Done a lot of work this year with safety and security in collaboration with our, our police department. We've had the police in several times for trainings and giving our teachers more options in the event of an emergency. We're working on social emotional initiatives because not only do you need the physical safety and the training, you need to make sure the kids are well-monitored for that because oftentimes, some of those tragedies we've heard about were because a student was socially or emotionally unwell. We've implemented a Navigate Prepared Program that's going to give us more ability to call a safety event more quickly. We've done some security upgrades. We're hoping for similar next year. And recently, we had a safety forum that featured several speakers about some of the efforts we're making, including Chief Tanya, SRO Martins, Mr. LaPage, and others about some of the efforts we've made district-wide to enhance our security. some of the efforts we've made district-wide to enhance our security. We recently did a survey, as we do frequently, to get feedback from our stakeholders, and I think it is important to know that our stakeholders are very satisfied, highly satisfied, with the services we provide in the district. I'm not going to read these quotes, but people feel that we do a great job with instructing children, looking out for their individualized needs. We also have done a great job recently in expanding our community partnerships. We recently worked with, um, Gary Amala, and he helped us build a greenhouse at our Linden Street School. We've worked at going into various businesses and getting ideas on what kind of workforce they want, and we're really building upon that. We've got a manufacturing panel that has come to the, um, high school, continuing to build those bridges. We have a collaboration with Central about, it's called the Go Kid Go, Go Baby Go program, um, modifying wheelchairs and toy cars for children to have accessibility. We're getting more and more increased, uh, mentorships and internships for our students to have options. And we've, you've heard us talk many times about our STEAM and STEM labs and what that's doing for our children. We also have success relative to our preschool. It's been NIAAC accredited, which is the highest accreditation you can get for your preschool. We've, uh, successfully completed the early stages of the NEASC accreditation for our high school. It went very well and overall got very positive, uh, accolades from that team. Our test scores across the district are on the rise. Most recently, both Linden and Tofflon were named schools of distinction because of certain increases they've had in their test scores, and that's a huge bang-out to our teachers, our principals who work hard every day with our kids. We, uh, recently had our boys' state soccer championship and last night, the co-ed cheerleading And again, there's some more community thoughts from how important it is for our teachers to collaborate, our staff to collaborate, parents are understanding how important that We continue to value our PLC time where our teachers get to work together to discuss students' teaching and learning. We're working on our culturally responsive teaching practices. Our, we're becoming an increasingly diverse district, and that's important for us to make sure our teachers understand how to work with that. We've developed a partnership with the Science Center, which has allowed us to roll out our new science curriculum with minimal cost to the district. We get very positive accolades from both our teachers, our parents, and at the state level, and actually at the national level, for our STEAM and STEM labs and how important they are to our children having exposure to careers of the future. We received a national award for our innovation, and, uh, we recently did a renovation to our, uh, grading at the middle school, where students are graded based on their mastery of standards versus just As, Bs, and Cs, like we always be graded by, and we're finding that's a much more engaging way and a more reflective way of how students are really And our graduates continue to do very well. They attain lots of scholarship money. They leave high school with, uh, well over two-hundred, what's the actual total for that? A significant amount of college credits while in high school, one-hundred, one thousand four. They leave with, um, lots of community service under their belt, seventy-two percent get into their first choice college. So our kids are leaving with a very, uh, high level of expertise, and ninety-eight percent leave knowing exactly what they're going to do after high school. So that concludes the board's portion. My fifty-four percent, was that relatively okay?
Dr. Brummett talked about the shared services, and I will tell you that, uh, a lot of this, the, um, regional and state organizations that I, meetings that I attend, which includes, uh, CCM, Council of Small Towns, and the Capital Region Council of Governments, you know, time and, time, uh, and time again, uh, one of the issues that they talk about is shared service, and they talk about shared services, not just between towns, but within communities. Uh, invariably, on a regular basis, they mentioned Plainville and the success that we've had, uh, about, uh, you know, you go talk to Plainville, it's working there and, you know, and, uh, I think it's given us some recognition around the state as well. And I, I certainly appreciate the, the collaboration that we have with the, with the school administration on a, on a, you know, a daily basis in terms of issues that arise, both at the town level, the school level, whether it's capital improvements, facilities, uh, you know, public safety, um, snow plowing in the morning, you know, you know, it's, 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 it certainly is a team effort. Uh, the next item we have is debt service. Um, your principal amount that we have right now, the amount of debt that we have is a little bit over twenty-six-point-seven million dollars. Last year, it was nineteen-point-eight million dollars. We did do some borrowing this year, so, uh, that's the reason for it going up, but you can see with town government is approximately eight-point-two million and Board of Education, eight-point-five, eighteen-point-five million. As far as our debt payments are concerned, um, on an earlier slide, you will see that we proposed four-point-seven million dollars towards, towards, uh, debt service payments for next year. We're proposing that that be completely offset, uh, the increase by three-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars coming out of the debt management plan, so that would net out the, uh, the debt, the debt payment at four-point, four-point-four million dollars, which is the, which is the level that we've been, that's been the council's, uh, uh, I guess, plan going forward, so. So there is an increase proposed for next year, there's a decrease proposed in every year after that. We have saved some money up through the debt management plan. We're proposing to offset the increase by, by the, uh, by using those debt management num, uh, uh, dollars. As far as the capital improvement plan is concerned, the proposed expenditures for the debt, for the capital improvements is almost three million dollars. I will point out that there's three sources of funding to support the capital plan, and what we have, uh, emboldened from the general fund is really what impacts, uh, the general taxpayer. That's nine-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars, almost nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Current budget is eight-hundred thousand dollars, so it's an increase of about, you know, um, one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. If you look at the projects, a good, you know, more than half of that, uh, total, uh, capital improvement budget amount, the two-point-nine million dollars, almost three million dollars. One-point-six million dollars has to do with the reconstruction of Town Line Road. The town council has, uh, the town of Plainville, uh, has received a one-point-six million dollar grant from, uh, from the state of Connecticut that goes through the, through CROD, Capital Region Council of Governments, to offset that project. So there's no impact to the, to the, to the, to the local town budget. Uh, that one-point-six million dollars will completely offset the, the, that particular project. So that net really nets out to not impacting the general, general fund budget. Uh, we're proposing to, uh, replace one of our Mack trucks, uh, and those are relatively expensive pieces of equipment at two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. The police dispatch communication system, it's more of a lease, an ongoing lease, that's a hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars. The senior center dial-a-ride, seventy thousand dollars. We're applying for a grant, uh, that would offset eighty percent of that. If we get the grant, then the net impact is significantly less. If we don't get the grant, we probably won't replace the, uh, one of, one of the senior vans for next year. So that, that really is contingent upon getting the grant, uh, whether we, whether we do that project or not. We have a couple of police cruisers to replace, revaluation, we have to, I believe we should start saving for that now, because it's relatively expensive to do it all in the last year. And, uh, and you hear, and you see here the townwide fiber project, which was approved earlier this evening. Uh, just, we just point out that, that that particular, um, project will have some offsetting savings in the operating budget once it's completed. Um, so we have eighteen other smaller projects totaling three-hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollars, which is an average of about nineteen thousand, uh, a project. So that's really the, the major ones that I, I wanted to review this evening. The Board of Ed, CIP, uh, budget, Dr. Brummett spoke about that. I would point out that, uh, there is a grant application up at the state. We're waiting to hear back from them. We're expecting to get somewhere between a hundred-and-thirty and a possibly a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars back if we, if we're successful in getting the grant. And talking with school administration, I'm proposing that we take that, at least a hundred-and-thirty of it, and put it into the capital improvement program to not only pay for some of the security improvements that are being proposed for next year, uh, but also to, um, to pay for some of the, some of the other offsetting, uh, uh, costs, uh, so that the net, net impact, if we're, if we're successful in getting that grant to the, instead of four-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars, I'm, I'm, you know, presenting it this evening as two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand and fifty dollars. To review again, the total proposed budget, sixty-two million, uh, represents an increase of three-point-six-three percent, almost two-point-two million dollars. If adopted as proposed, with the revenues in Governor Lamont's proposed budget, the increase would be one-point-two-three mils or a three-point-six-five percent increase in taxes. We do have a public hearing scheduled for Thursday, March seventh, this Thursday, at seven P.M. That would be right here. As far as the mil rate calculation is concerned, for those who want to go through the math, this is, this is it right here. It's, it looks relatively complicated, but it's not. This will all be posted online, so, uh, you know, it's a calculation of, you know, gross expenditures minus what we feel our other revenues are going to be. We have a net budget. We talk about a use of fund balance and proposing we use the same amount in fund balance that we, the council has used for several years now, which is two-hundred thousand dollars. We don't collect a hundred percent of our taxes, certainly not a hundred percent of our current taxes. Our collection, our tax collection rate is, is ninety-seven-point-four percent, so we have to account for the fact that we're not going to collect a hundred percent. That gives us a, a, uh, a value of one mil of about one-point-four million dollars when you divide it into the amount that, that we need to raise, uh, to, to support this proposed budget. It ends up being thirty-five-point-zero-seven mils. Our current mil rate is thirty-three-point-eight-four. That's one-point-two-three or three-point-six-five percent. To put that in a little bit of perspective, our mil rate history since our last revaluation is up on the board. The blue is, is, is actual, the yellow is what's being proposed. That's a seven-year period that you see here. I will tell you that the seven-year period, even if it included the yellow, uh, the, the yellow amount, the yellow increase, it would be a mil rate increase average over seventy years of one-point-seven percent. It's a little bit higher this year, but it gets offsetted by previous years with lower increases. Impact on the average homeowner, average home value, a hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars. This comes from the assessor's office. We, we tax people at seventy percent of that value, which is a hundred, approximately a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand. Uh, for somebody who paid taxes this year at thirty-three-point-eight-four, about forty-six-hundred dollars, they would pay forty-eight-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. It's an increase of a hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars. For a condominium owner, this, again, this information comes from the assessor's office. Average homeowner of a condominium has a total valuation of one-thirty-six-six-four-four. Again, we tax it, uh, seventy percent of that, which brings it down to about ninety-six thousand dollars. Uh, for that, for an average condominium owner in town, that would be an increase of about a hundred-and-eighteen dollars. We repeated this slide in case you forgot about it. No. I don't know. I don't know how to, I noticed it earlier. Uh, I want to talk a little bit about Plainville economy, because our economy does change over time, and I, and I'd like to, you know, point out a couple of things. One is that the social security increase this year is two-point-eight percent. That was as of, uh, January first. I think this is the largest increase in quite some time. Median household income, this has to do with, with information that we receive from the Office of Policy and Management. They put out what they call fiscal indicators, municipal fiscal indicators. Their latest information goes from two-fifth, and I, you know, I did it over a two-year period from two thousand fifteen to two thousand seventeen. Those are the latest numbers that are available. I think one could rationalize that, you know, that's pretty much where we stand today, if, if not a little bit better. But over that two-year period, median household income, according to those indicators in Plainville, this is Plainville, two-year total, went up a total of six-point-eight percent, median household income. For per capita income, according to those, that same, that same information, went up about almost fourteen percent. That's on a person basis in Plainville. Foreclosures are down about thirty percent over the last two years compared to the three years previous. So foreclosures are down. Uh, median household values, this is a one-year, this is from last year to this year, is up a point-seven percent, almost one percent. And the unemployment rate as of December of eighteen is three-point-one percent. I will tell you that two years ago, that unemployment rate was four-point-five percent, so that's a thirty-one percent decrease over the last two years. So, uh, using, you know, these statistics, uh, the Plainville economy is certainly in a lot better position today than it was, than it was, you know, years before that. To put that in a little bit of perspective, and I did a little work on the inflation rate, the first column is the actual inflation rate from sixteen to, to even, they're even projecting what the, what the inflation rate is going to be for two thou, at the end of two thousand nineteen. These are calendar years, two thousand nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. So you see an inflation rate that, that basically, you know, was in the, you know, two percent range going forward, and this is our budget expenditures during that period of time. And I, what I, what I think is interesting to note is that from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty, total inflation measured by the inflation rate over that five-year period is ten-point-one percent. And our fiscal year sixteen to fiscal year, uh, twenty, budget increase during that same period of time is eleven-point-seven-four percent. That means that, you know, we, we went up slightly above the inflation rate, which, you know, presumably is what increases our, our expenditures, you know, automatically because things get more expensive. So, um, that's our presentation for this evening. Again, uh, we have a public hearing on Thursday, right here in this, in this room, beginning at seven P.M. We will do a shorter version of this presentation because really the purpose of the public hearing is to hear from the public with regards to, uh, the proposed budget, and then the council will begin their workshops as they adopt it, a schedule beginning on Monday. Uh, this budget, uh, the full text of the budget, which is the same, uh, paper binders that we handed out this evening, is over at the library. I think there's two copies of it over there. People can, can, uh, review it. I think, I don't think they'll let you take it out of the, the library, but certainly all of the information that the council has is over at the library as well. We'll be, be posting this presentation online tomorrow morning, as well as the, uh, some of the summaries as well. So, uh, that's the, uh, presentation for this evening. I, uh, thank you for your attendance, for listening to, uh, and going through all of our slides, and, uh, we look forward to working, uh, both with the town council and the Board of Education to, you know, come up with a, a budget that will be satisfactory and, and meet the, uh, the needs of the community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert, and, uh, thank you Superintendent Brummett for putting this material together for us, and, um, as Robert said, we'll be having a public hearing, um, on Thursday, and then the town council will begin its formal budget deliberations next week. So there is, there's work to be done, and, and the council will delve into some of these numbers in greater depth, but, um, thank you very much for putting that together for us tonight, and we'll see a summary of that on Thursday. Do we have any other discussions of interest tonight before we close out of this portion?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We do not have anything else on our agenda this evening, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
May I be here?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.[1761.71][1761.71][music]